Good evening, welcome to this meeting of Westminster's mayor and town attorney council. Council meets here in City Hall on the second and fourth Mondays of every month. Please note the council meetings are open to the public here in City Hall. They're also available and streamed live from the city's YouTube page as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. It now begins as we do every meeting with a pledge of allegiance followed by a warning sign.
Pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as to all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask everybody to please take a moment. It's a courtesy to everyone to take yourself home and make sure they're silent so that we don't see any other electronic. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the time information packet for the council meetings are available online on the city's website. Copies of the agenda are available here in the front of the room for folks who are physically here at the meeting. We have a couple of presentations tonight and we'll start working through those first. I want to thank Commissioner Tom Gordon, it's always nice to see you Commissioner. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Our first presentation is on the Enough Act. And several weeks ago, we received a message from the county asking for some time to make this presentation. We're pleased to have Mr. Red Singer, formerly the county health officer and now the manager of the local management board to come and share this presentation with. Mr. Singer, thank you, Tom.
Thank you guys for giving us the time. Thank you Mayor Becker and Councilman Councilman. And again, I want to thank Commissioner Gordon for his support and for being here tonight as we kick off this new initiative. And our director of our, of our, of our, yeah, department, Celine Stigl. So, and thank her for her support. We've got a team from our local management board, our local management board for children, youth and families is here tonight with me. Marie Lauren, she's our local care team coordinator. Our local care team helps draw a roadmap for families whose kids might be struggling and they need services and we try to help, help them figure out how to connect with services. And Addison Esslinger is our new Enough Act coordinator who will be the face of this program out in the public and will be working a lot in your community here in Westminster, so.
Where do I point it to get it to move?
They were hit their right button on the wheel.
Oh, right, there we go. There we go. Okay, so what is the Enough Act? I mean, it's an acronym. It's engaging neighborhoods, organizations, unions, governments and households. It's an initiative that is first of its kind. It's a state-led, place-based strategy to create poverty-fighting opportunities driven by the communities where they're experiencing these, this poverty. Based on data and cross-sector partnerships. Enough will surge resources in the neighborhoods that have been disproportionately impacted by systems and policies that limit wealth creation and economic mobility. Priority of the Lauren Miller administration. We are here, obviously, talking to you all tonight because you guys are the G in this acronym, governments, and we think that your input on how we, how we engage the neighborhoods that are here in Westminster that we're going to be working with is very important, so we want your feedback. The Enough Theory of Action and it's, there are pillars to this Enough Theory of Action. And essentially, we want all residents to feel welcome and valued and have a role in the growth of their community. That all children have access to high-quality education and care while ensuring smooth transitions from birth until working in a career. That all families have access to affordable, high-quality healthcare, including paternal mental health and behavioral healthcare. And all families can meet their needs, working with dignity and build wealth for the future. All residents of the community feel safe and have access to high-quality housing that's affordable, a thriving core, commercial core, recreational spaces, nutritious foods and transportation. And, you know, your staff here are an important part of this too, as we work on this. And all of the nonprofits and other organizations in the community. That's why, you know, it's so many organizations we expect to be involved in trying to add an impact. So, this cross-sector partnerships. The Enough Theory of Action calls for cross-sector diverse partnerships to engage in collaboration and action with community residents to drive decisions for place-based investments and strategies to increase economic mobility to end child poverty in Maryland. Right now, the LMB is kind of the center of this circle. What we'd really like to do is be able to identify partners. In, in the, in the act, they refer to a community quarterback. And the LMB is acting as a community quarterback at this point. But we'd really like to identify organizations that really have roots in the community, that they can help come up with solutions that make sense for the community, that already have trust of the community, and we can work with them and be more of an advisor or, or from that standpoint and have them kind of lead the action within the community where they're already working. So, these are the Enough results areas. Don't really think I need to say a lot more about those, but you can take a look at those. So, we've got a couple of maps and what we're trying to do, the whole goal of this program is to end child poverty. And there are, there are two areas in Carroll County that we're being asked to focus on. The areas that are darkest blue, which you can see here on the county map, over here in Union Bridge, and then there's this area in Westminster which we have a bigger map up here that you can, you can see a little bit more clearly. Those are the areas with twenty to twenty-nine percent child poverty in Carroll County. The areas that are lighter green, they're ten to nineteen percent. So, there are some pockets of higher poverty in other parts of the county, but these are the two areas that we've been asked to primarily focus on as we're doing this. So, the area in Westminster. And, you know, if you have time, or we can even leave this here if you want, we could talk about this more. This is the, this is the census tract that's been identified. And this census tract in Westminster that essentially runs from Cape Wagon Road. And this, this map almost seems upside down to me because as you're coming into the city, we're going from bottom to top, but that's north. Starts out here at Cape Wagner Road by Friendship Valley Elementary School, runs out here to Main Street and down to Route twenty-seven as far as the census tract is concerned. And what I like to tell people is, I don't know that poverty neatly follows the census tract. And where we feel like we'd like to have your input, you know, if you want to go up here and draw on the map and show us an area or a neighborhood you think has high poverty that's, you know, maybe contiguous to this, but it's not in the census tract, we probably want to focus on those areas. But there's also areas like over here to Ford's Friendship Valley Elementary School where we probably don't need to pay as much attention because there are large houses out of here. Even the school itself is not, they don't have a lot of free and reduced meal students. So, we're kind of with like your input on where we need to focus. It's probably Bishop's Guard in those places. And we kind of already have an idea in our head that we need to extend this down Pennsylvania Avenue, down by St. John's and down in the area that's around there. But there might be other neighborhoods that you think we should focus on as well. The Westminster map's a little complicated for us because as we talk about partnering with schools and things of that nature, there are three different elementary schools that are in the census tract. There's two different middle schools and two different high schools. So, it's, you know, where in Union Bridge, we've got one school to deal with from elementary, middle and high. It's a little more complicated here when we want to work with the schools and the junior centers because there's a number of different schools. But probably, you know, Robert Boatman and Cranberry Elementary that we'd be focusing on and the Winter's Mill High School.
East Mill.
The East Mill, yep. So, one of the things that I want to point out here is, according to census data, we have a child poverty rate of twenty-eight point five percent in the census tract. And I think if we drew our own tract around this and we took in these areas, we eliminated these areas, we'd probably be up over thirty percent because it's just, you know, census tracts are census tracts. But I kind of, just doing the work that we do, we kind of know where, where some of these poverty areas are. But again, we'd like to get your input as to where you think we ought to be focusing. But the difficult part about this is as well though, is eighty percent, more than eighty percent of the, the children that are identified as living in poverty are Hispanic or Latino, identify as being Hispanic or Latino. And that's going to be really tough for us right now because I know that the city of Westminster and your staff have worked really hard to build good relationships with the Latino population. But trust of government agencies right now with the Latino community is, is going to be difficult. And that's going to be an obstacle that we're going to have to work to overcome. And that is, you know, we're going to try and make a difference in, in poverty here in the community. So, we've got, one of the things we want to do is we want to do an assessment. First phase, this is the first phase of it, not just about assessing the community because we want to do something about it. But our first phase is to go out, do an asset map and do an assessment of the community. And we need to engage people in the community, bring them together and have them give us our input about what, what, what the community needs and what should be done to help with economic mobility within the community. The LMB has always done this kind of work, but the difference here, what we're doing under the Enough Act, is we're focusing on specific communities that had high rates of poverty as opposed to focusing on the county as a whole. We're going to come up with a plan for the whole county, but we specifically want to concentrate on a couple of communities. And we need your support and helping us engage those communities. So, how can you help? And this is the biggest piece. There's a lot of things you all can help us with. Talk us about who we should engage with, who currently is working within the community that we ought to be talking to. You know, how we should engage people in the community. We've got a number of ideas, but we want to hear from you as to what you think good ideas would be. How can you get the community members to come out and to give us their feedback? And where should we meet with people? And we, some of the ideas, I've already been out talking to some of the organizations we know of. I know Boys and Girls Club might be a great place to do this because they're very welcoming to the, to the Latino community and whatnot. And, you know, if you bring, bring your kids in and you have something for the kids to do and we want to get the parents to give us input on a survey, it might be a way to do it. You know, one of the things we talked about maybe out of Union Bridge was maybe convening a, a kind of a dinner at car hall and having activities for the kids. You know, some of the churches might be a way to do it. So, we really kind of need your thoughts on how we best would get people in the community to come out and participate in this process. Which, what's going to be harder about this is, right now, we don't rise the level of competitive grants that the state's giving out for the Enough Act. But we've got some ideas about, if we, if we figure out things that need to be done, we want, we want to come up with actionable. What are we going to do, whether it's transportation issues or something like that? We've got, the LMB right now, we've got a pilot transportation project because students and, and, and a lot of the kids are coming from, from up here at Winter's Mill that are free and reduced meal kids that if you don't have a way to get to an internship, you can't go if you're in the public school system. So, we've been piling the transportation projects so we can try to get kids out and get them to internships. It, you know, it's kind of, kind of makes sense that the kids who are, whose families are struggling the most, that we want to give them an internship and see what possible employment opportunities are out there for them. But things like that, if we might hear from the community is that, and then how do we take action on that? And, you know, we might have to look at, is there a way we could use the cannabis funds that are coming into the county to help these areas that have been impacted from a socioeconomic standpoint? Or, you know, do we need to go out and talk to Great Calor or some other foundation or something like that to see if, hey, we've got this idea and the community really thinks this would help? To try to make a difference economically for these families so that they can build some generational wealth. So, that's pretty much most of my presentation. We've got a nice, high-tech QR code here and I think Addison has, has, has some that are printed out. We've also got printed surveys. But what this would do is it'll take you to a survey that kind of helps guys. This is the, lets you guys give us some feedback as to who we should be engaging with, how we might engage people. You know, I can either leave this map here and you guys maybe circle some communities you think we need to focus on. You could also just, I think Addison put in the survey, just give us the name of the community and some street crossroads. We can look at it that way. But I really, genuinely, in order for this to work for us, we need to know, you know, how we should engage this, this, this area, where we should be focusing on. And then we come up with a plan and we probably will come back to you at some point in time and say, hey, these are the things we're thinking about. How can we work with you? And, and some of this may be, you know, there may be organizations out there that are doing some work and they just need a little bit of technical help to, to make it better. You know, I know we're all, there's a lot of really good collaboration that goes on in this county and I'm always really proud of that. And it makes, makes my job a lot easier when I was health officer before and now doing this work with the LMB. The amount of collaboration we have here and trying to come up with solutions that are right for our community is, is something that we're really good at here in Carroll County. So, we want your input, we certainly welcome your input. If anybody wants to scan the QR code, you can do it now or we'll just leave some of these printouts with you. And, you know, people that are here in the audience, you're more than welcome to give you, give us your input as well. We're going to be asking for input for the community. This is just step one. Addison's going to be getting out, giving these presentations to some of our nonprofits and other groups. If you know a group that we should reach out to, that should hear about what we're trying to accomplish with the Enough Act, we'd be glad to come out and talk to them. So, do you bring business cards with you too? So, she's got some business cards she can leave with you guys. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them, but that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, thank you very much, I'm glad to know. We certainly be glad to have your card and, you know, materials. I think we all have copies of the power plate which has, there are articles, we'll be able to follow up on that. And I think, you know, we're all interested in participating in the survey and see if we want to leave the map. And we'll, we'll take a look at it along with the staff and, you know, think about the issues we raised. Certainly, you know, I think, you know, you're right, we do it with history, particularly working with you, Mr. Singer. And we're happy to try to be cooperative and do what we can to support this community. We certainly understand the challenges that are faced here and, and that are particularly acute at the moment in terms of doing this outreach, so we're glad to try and do what we can there as well. Do you have any questions, Mr. Singer?
So, Mr. Singer, you sort of touched a little bit on funding sources for this. You talked a little bit about potentially using some of the cannabis money coming back or potentially going out to, you know, philanthropy in the county. Is there, is there county money or state money that's behind this to start with, to pilot it or?
So, we haven't gotten to the, we, our communities don't, you've got, there are certain thresholds you have to meet in order to be able, be eligible for the state competitive grants right now. And we, we don't meet that threshold. Governor Moore's goal is to eventually have all the communities that are identified as high, high poverty being eligible for these competitive grants. I, I think that that's wishful thinking. And so, I think what, what our thought was, and I'll tell you, I'll be honest with you. When they first said, we're going to give you this money to go out and engage the community, my biggest concern was is, well, I don't want to go out and raise people's expectations that we're going to do something and then not doing.
Exactly right.
So, we're going to, we're going to spend time trying to figure out how, what we can address. And we're going to have to work hard to figure out how to, whether it's, you know, it may be that we fund some programs over at CCYSB and maybe they're not reaching some of the population we need them to reach, for instance, as the LMB. And maybe we're, you know, maybe we need to talk about redirecting some existing resources. Maybe, maybe the cannabis money will fund a small project or something like that. It's, you know, it, it seems to fit with the purpose of what those funds are there for. I, you know, that's something that's going to have to be discussed and ultimately, you know, elected officials are going to have to weigh in on, on decisions on how that would be used. But that's a possibility. And, and I know in, in the philanthropic folks we have out there, if you have a really good idea, there are enough, there are enough foundations out here in Carroll County where if you've got a good idea that you can convince somebody and it's going to make an impact, that they might be willing to fund it. I, again, I, I certainly understand and wish there was money that was tied to this. If we could say, yeah, absolutely, we've got a million dollars to do some projects, but we don't. So, we're going to have to figure this out on our own. And I, I certainly don't want to raise people's expectations and not be able to deliver anything. So, it's, it's going to be, have to be something that we're going to have to figure out. And I think, you know, as a, as a community, we have a good track record. I, I'll throw out there, for instance, when I was at the health department, we had, you know, we had a lot of discussion about what do we do about substance use issue and what can we do from a prevention standpoint? And we can't get people to fund certain prevention things because you can't measure. And we can't get people to fund certain prevention things because you can't measure. Everybody wants to measure how many people you save with melaxone or this, that, or the other thing. And, you know, out of the collaboration we had amongst the senior policy group, we decided that what we really needed was after-school programs in our middle schools. And, you know, the commissioner said, well, we've got some money and the state has some money. And we pulled together about four or five different sources of funding that kind of kick off after-school programs. And, you know, the Boys and Girls Clubs stepped up and said, we can do this and signed a contract, and they're running after-school programs in all of one of our middle schools here now. And I think, you know, something like that from a prevention standpoint makes all the difference in the world. Because, you know, if you've taken any courses on mental health first aid or anything like that, the most important thing that a child can have is at least one person that cares about them and that they can turn to. And it's not always necessarily going to be their parents in some of these cases, and that's unfortunate. But, you know, with mentorship programs and things like that that Boys and Girls Club have, it's kind of like having an extra parent there, and it's kind of cool. When I do the visits to these sites, I go out and I see, and the first thing they do when they come in the door is they're checking home access to see if the kids have done their own work. And, you know, I think those kind of things make a difference. And so I think from a collaborative standpoint, we're just going to have to figure it out. And it's going to take some hard work. And, you know, nothing ever gets done without, with zero money, but there are people who are willing to give if you can convince them it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Singer.
Thank you. Actually, do you have any questions? Very good. Mr. Singer, thanks very much. Well, thank you for participating and sharing my thoughts with you. And thanks very much to the community family for being, especially Mr. Singer. Mr. Singer, did you want to say anything?
Well, no, I just wanted to thank you all for your time this evening. And as always, I look forward to meeting with you on other things as we come up.
Very good. Thanks for the conversation.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that.
So when Dr. Julia Jackson became president of McDaniel College, one of the commitments that she made to the city was that to be whole engaged in our community. And we're very pleased to say that she certainly has been. And one of the promises that she made was that she would try to send a member of her senior staff every council meeting to share with us little news of what's going on at the college and take that to her and to the rest of the senior staff, what they learned at the council meeting. So tonight, we're very pleased to have Dean Vicky Mazer with us to play that role. So Dean, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I won't take much time, but I did want to stop by. I was here about a year ago as one of the members of the President's Council and provided an update on where we work, some new partnering developments. So a year later, I wanted to give a little bit of an update. As you know, one of our pillars in our strategic plan is community partnerships. And part of that is developing programs that not only work toward meeting workforce needs here in this community, but also in terms of how we are fulfilling our role as an educational partner in the community. So some of the programs that we have launched and/or will be launching, one is our nursing program that I'm sure you've heard about and read about in our partnership with Carroll Hospital. That program is going forward very nicely. We admitted our first cohort of students in fall 2024. We are in our second recruitment cycle, and we're really just very happy about partnership on how this program model is actually going to be developed. We have signed our agreement with Carroll Hospital to renovate Three West inside the hospital for our educational facility. So it will house classrooms, simulation labs, skills labs, faculty offices as well. And that construction begins hopefully in the next couple of weeks. So we will find ourselves in about seven or eight months in a position to actually move into that facility. The other programs that we've launched are early childhood education. And I was extremely interested to hear about what Mr. Singer was presenting because one of the ways we can address poverty is early childhood education and early intervention. So we were able to get approval for and launched our early childhood education program that actually provides a program to prepare teachers to work in PK pre-kindergarten classrooms, both in public schools and in the community. So our work in developing partnerships to do that will actually begin now as well. In addition to that, we are launching a speech-language pathology program, a master's in speech-language pathology and a master's in occupational therapy. We've hired the leadership of both of those programs and have submitted, I believe, if not already submitted, but close to submitting drawings for renovation of Merritt Hall to house those programs. And of course, that model is also built on development of partnerships. One of the largest growing areas in need in our public school systems particularly is speech-language pathology and occupational therapy and those kinds of services. So we'll be providing academic programs that help meet that need for workforce development as well. So we're really excited about these programs. We will launch occupational therapy in summer of 2026 and speech-language pathology shortly after in 2027. So we are on track for those things. The other thing that I would update you on is a large construction project that we have going on right now in our library, where we are renovating our library to create more of a hub and a learning commons for our students, where students will get support services for across the board, not just library support, but also support in advising and mentoring, tutoring, and those kinds of services that our college students need and want. So it's a revitalization and a reimagination of what a library can do and look like in collaboration with other departments across the institution. So we have a lot of other things happening, but you will hear about those in the upcoming months when we have other folks join you. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Very good. Thank you. Do you have any questions for Dean Mazer? Thank you very much for joining us. We appreciate it. It's always great to hear what's happening up in the Hill.
Good. Thanks.
One last introduction I'd like to make. We're very pleased to have with us tonight the field representative for CEO of U.S. Senator Chris Van Hollen, Mr. Robin Summerfield. Mr. Summerfield played a similar role previously for Senator Cardin, and we're pleased that he's continuing his public service and bringing a wealth of knowledge of Maryland and federal programs. And he's always been a helpful friend, so we're pleased to have him here with us. Mr. Summerfield, was I saying?
I just want to, I wanted to come introduce myself to those who I haven't met and see those who I have met and have known for a long time. It's great to be on Team Van Hollen. As your president mentioned, I worked for Ben Cardin for 17 years prior to this. I've been in a similar role, Frederick West. So Carroll County is a new addition to my portfolio, and I look forward to getting to know what's going on here in the account.
Very good. You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Jump back up to the top of the agenda to a statement for the record that I'm required to make about the closed meeting of Monday, January 27, 2025. In accordance with the General Provisions Article, Section 3-306(c)(2) of the Amity Code of Maryland, and without objection, it is noted that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that the common council met in a closed meeting on Monday, January 27, 2025, at 8:37 PM. Pursuant to General Provision Article, Section 3-305(b)(3), it considered the acquisition of real property for public purpose and managed directly generated direct return. And B7, it consult with council to obtain the due updates. The meeting was closed on a motion by Mr. Karachi, seconded by Ms. Gilbert, and the vote to close the meeting. Voting in favor were Mr. Karachi, Ms. Gilbert, and Mr. Hoff, Mr. Dayhoff, and Ms. Ashton. Following staff members attended the meeting, Director of Community Planning and Development, Deputy City Administrator Imhals, and City Attorney Lavandia. The common council took no official action during the meeting and the closed meeting adjourned at 9:35 PM. Thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes. We have four items. We have the minutes of the meeting of the Baron Common Council on January 13, 2025, the closed meeting of the same date, the meeting of the council on January 27, and the closed meeting of the same date. Now, a motion to approve the minutes. Motion to approve. The motion, Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second?
Second.
The second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. And the minutes on the table. Thank you. We have three items on the consent calendar of the evening. We have a motion to approve the consent.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the three items under the.
Yeah, a motion by Mr. Hoff to approve the consent calendar. We may have a second there. Second item is Mr. Karachi. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If they're opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. Consent calendar approved. Report for your mayor, Dr. Becker.
Right. Thank you, Mr. President. There's only one thing I'd like to make a comment on tonight. And I'm sure for those of you who are watching, for everyone who's here, you've noticed what has been going on in the Cal County Times and the paper over the last several days. So I'd just like to make a comment at the meeting regarding a situation with Access Carroll that has come up within our region. So I want to start by stating that Access Carroll is an important part of the landscape of Westminster and Carroll County. The organization is beneficial to clients who receive their services as well they play an active role in the safety net of programs for Carroll County's most vulnerable residents. The mission statement of Access Carroll reads, and I quote, "To champion health and provide quality integrated healthcare service for low-income residents of Carroll County, Maryland." Access Carroll also states that they are a person-centered and integrated healthcare home for the residents of Carroll County, Maryland, and later state in their documentation that they require proof of Carroll County residency and, among other documents, to access health and public assistance services. These statements from Access Carroll's own literature illustrate the importance of the program to county residents. While I speak for myself, I don't think that anyone up here behind the table would disagree that the services provided by Access Carroll are important for Carroll County and Westminster residents. About two weeks ago, the council and I were made aware of a project between Sinai Hospital and Access Carroll of an Access Carroll respite services program, which would be placed in Access Carroll's existing facility at 10 Distillery Drive in downtown Westminster. This was the first time we had heard of the project, which is located within the municipal boundary of the city of Westminster and one block off of Main Street. We had not been notified by any party involved in the project until the last minute. Some of us attended an informational meeting with Ms. Black concerning the project. Ms. Black is a wonderful and caring individual. She has helped place Access Carroll in its success and helped it to grow into the program it is today. While this meeting did include statistical information on the homeless population in Carroll County and highlight the importance of Access Carroll to Carroll County residents, it became clear that the project being proposed was to serve patients of Sinai Hospital and not Carroll County. The project involved a renovation of Access Carroll to include 10 beds for patients to be brought from Sinai Hospital to Westminster. The proposal has a pilot project of three years, during which time the residents of the program would be relocated from Sinai to Westminster. They are not residents of Carroll County, whom according to Access Carroll's mission statement are the population that they serve. There are several serious concerns regarding this project. The number of non-Carroll County residents who would be seeking service as part of the project would be only order of about 100 per year. The clients of this program are free to leave at any time, regardless of whether they have someplace to go or whether they decide to remain in Westminster. Resources in the county are stretched thin already, including law enforcement resources from both the Westminster Police Department and the Carroll County Sheriff's Office. There are concerns about increased crime in downtown, an uptick in the number of homeless individuals on Main Street and the surrounding area, and the aforementioned strain on resources. Not only law enforcement, but a strain put on other organizations which help the underserved community. This proposal is also a cost-saving measure for Sinai Hospital program. According to the information provided from Ms. Black, a four-day length of stay in Sinai Hospital is only average of $3,000. But we have been told that the length of stay for patients such as these is four to six weeks in this program, making that number even higher, whereas a medical respite facility at Access Carroll could possibly operate at $246 a day. I want to be clear, I do not oppose services for Westminster city residents or Carroll County residents. I'm a supporter of Access Carroll and of many of the other nonprofits which serve Carroll Countyans. Any information to the contrary is misconstrued and misguided and serves only to obfuscate the current situation. Access Carroll's stated mission is to serve Carroll County residents. This proposed project has many concerns, not only from myself, but from citizens who have reached out to me, local law enforcement, and others. As mayor, I am responsible for listening to and representing all the residents of the city of Westminster. And due to the concerns revolving around this project and its consequences, I cannot condone its presence in our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Right. Thank you very much, Dr. Becker. Next item on our agenda is reports to our committees. We'll begin as we always do with our ideas onto the Arts Council, Mr. Dayhoff.
No report, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Hoff.
The only thing I will mention is tomorrow morning is the ribbon cutting for Chicken Salad Chick, which I believe, Mr. Devo, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that's the first in the state that's going to be.
I believe so, yes.
Yes. So that's kind of exciting. It's in the same strip center where Sprouts is. So I'm sure some of, I'll see somebody there tomorrow. Thank you.
Right. Very good. Thank you. We have the Finance Committee. I'd just say that we had had a meeting planned for later this week, which is having postponed because it's getting complex, and we'll get that together as soon as we can. I have nothing to report on behalf of the Personnel Committee. Public Safety, Mr. Karachi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have just one thing that I'm going to touch on. I'm sure most of you recall that you voted to state past Public Safety Article 3-207e that requires the Police Training and Standards Commission to establish the system by which each law enforcement agent annually files a detailed description of its community policing program. Furthermore, the department shall annually review each community policing program filed in accordance with 3-517 and provide each agency with any comments for consideration to improve the agency's community policing program efforts. Just saying personally, I wasn't overly thrilled about the state doing this. I think it's a little bit onerous to some extent on the local jurisdiction and takes a little bit of our authority away relative to our police department. But they did it, and we have to follow the rules. So this year, of course, the chief, as he always does, did what he's required to do and provided all the information to this agency. And I want to read to you the comments that came back from the commission regarding the Westminster Police Department, because I think you're all going to be very proud of this. Your agency's report serves as a wonderful model and clearly demonstrates a strong understanding of the best practices in community policing for an agency and community of your size and demographics. Therefore, no additional comments are offered at this time. You have demonstrated a strong understanding of community policing within your report. Now, obviously, we already all know that. We didn't need them to tell us that. But it's awesome that they did regardless. So I think we're all very appreciative of their comments. And Chief, congratulations. It's, you just continue to do an incredible job. And I appreciate this for everyone here today. We're just incredibly grateful for the work that you and your leadership team and your staff do every day to keep us safe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Karachi. Public Works Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, yeah, I want us to start off my report with a slight clarification. Some of you either watching us or here in the audience read an article from the Cal County Times that reported that we spent $44,770 on salt. That was a little bit inaccurate, so I just want to clarify that. That if you would have listened to what I would have said that evening, that I did my report on the last storm, what I said was that we spent $44,770 total on snow removal. Um, not salt. Um, otherwise, we have a lot of salt in this city. That's just a lot of salt. Um, but anyway, I just wanted to clarify that for anybody who's wondering why I spend so much money on salt. We don't. Um, other than that, we're just prepping for the next storm, and we're not going to spend $44,000 on salt.
I'm here.
Sure. Should I go right into Parks and Rec?
Uh, yeah, please do.
Um, I don't have any other comment for Parks and Rec, other than we're prepping for the upcoming Celtic canter.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. And Technology Committee, Mr. Dayhoff, anything you want to?
No report, sir.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Now it's time for council comments and discussion. This is the opportunity for council members to share their thoughts or concerns on any other issues that are not elsewhere. for council members to, uh, share their thoughts or concerns on any other issues that, uh, are not elsewhere on the agenda or a part of the community. I'm just gonna take the privilege of starting off, uh, myself this evening, as I rarely do, but I wanted to do this this, this one time. Just say, I want to take this opportunity to associate myself with the mayor's very thoughtful comments on, uh, the respite facility proposed by Access Carol for location of the distillery building here in downtown Westminster. I also have great respect and admiration for the work done by, done for Carroll Countyans by Access Carol and appreciate their good work in our community. That's not a dispute at all. For me, the crux of the issue is that the large majority of those housed in this facility will be people sent to Baltimore from, sent to Westminster from Baltimore after initial treatment in Sinai Hospital. Because this composition of the primary population is projected to continue for at least three years and I believe will last much longer. I don't believe that our community has the resources or infrastructure that one finds in major metropolitan areas that would support such an influx of non-county residents. Nor do I believe that we should involuntarily be put in the position of having to use city resources to manage the consequences of this effort. And so for that reason, I hope that this decision by Access Carol and the county commissioners can and will be revisited and reversed sometime in the future. Let's see, on that, I'm gonna now turn to Mr. Kavachi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'll continue with the theme related to this Sinai Hospital respite care. And I refer to it as that, not talking about Access Carol, because the reality is, it's what it is. It's being funded by Sinai Hospital. You follow the money. It's all coming from Sinai Hospital. This has very little to do with Carroll County residents. It's really about Sinai Hospital and getting these people up here from their facility into our community because it's cheaper to do it. And I'd like to commend the mayor in her courage. Um, you know, I, I, I've been working hard behind the scenes to help dissuade our commissioners from moving forward with this along with other folks, but the reality is the mayor has been the one that, that has had to be out in front of this, as is the mayor's role typically, but it took a lot of courage for her. Um, on this one, this is a tough one and she had to stand tall and do the right thing. And I'm very proud of her for doing that. I think we all probably are. Um, so I'd just like to commend her and that courage. And I'll leave, I'll, I'll finish with this. As chair of public safety, uh, this is, this is an enormous issue on the public safety front. And that's really, for me, the main driving factor is the public safety concerns that coincide with this, 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 uh, situation. I, I listen to three people in this county when it comes to public safety. They're three experts. And it's undeniable, uh, it's just absolutely undeniable that these three people are the people all of us should be listening to when we make decisions related to public safety. First and foremost is our chief. He's the most important person that I listen to related to public safety issues in the city of Westminster. Second would be the sheriff. Sheriff DeWes has overall responsibility for public safety in the entire county. He worked closely with the chief related to that. And then tertiary, I would say the state's attorney is the other person we should all be listening to when it comes to public safety, because of course he plays a major role on, 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 you know, in, as being the state's attorney. All three of them have been unequivocal on their, uh, uh, belief that this is absolutely an awful idea and that we should absolutely not be moving forward with it. And if the three most prominent, most knowledgeable, most highest-level experts in, in public safety are saying this is a bad idea, I think everyone needs to be listening to them and put a stop to this, uh, this situation. That's all, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Um, Mr. Dayhoff.
Uh, no report, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Well, I guess I'm gonna continue the theme. Um, so, um, I just want to make a comment regarding the city's concern and opposition to the location of Access Carol's proposed respite facility. Given my occupation, most people know that I am an APS worker for the Department of Social Services here in Carroll County. And I can without a doubt attest that Carroll County needs a respite facility to manage and deal with the needs of our aging population. Um, needs that as the years go by are going to increase. Needs that circle around the homeless person who has nowhere to go after surgery and still needs physical therapy but cannot get it because they do not have a viable address. Needs that go beyond that to a family member needing care for their loved one who they are caregiving for, um, so that they themselves can have surgery. Um, lower to mid-income folks do not have that privilege of resources to care for loved ones and often out of necessity, choose to not have procedures or push off their own health and then end up compounding the problems in their family. I could go on for, for probably hours with stories I personally know. I also know that if anyone is to run a facility, like a respite facility, Tammy Black would do a phenomenal job, as we all know. However, although I recognize and understand the needs for a medical respite facility here in Carroll County, and I repeat, here in Carroll County for our Carroll County residents, I find having this facility's funding from LifeBridge contingent on the service of participants from Baltimore City and DC unfair to our county and our city residents and will end up taxing on our own community resources on multiple levels. In addition, I find it disconcerting that the city was never contacted to weigh in on the project planning process. A process that has been going on for probably ten years. An example of terrible planning on behalf of our commissioners and a very clear example of their lack of concern and respect for the residents, for the residents of our city, our staff here in Westminster City and us. A planning process that has been going on and discussed through two different administrations of commissioners. If we were to ask to weigh in on any, at any time regarding the location of this project, our reaction would most likely be different than what you're seeing here in the last week. I do believe and hope that given the need for this service in our county and the desire of LifeBridge to work with Access Carol, they compromise for this project that works for our county and our city citizens can be made so that this project can come to fruition. We all want to help people in our county and in our city. But our job as city council and as a mayor is to represent the, the city of Westminster and our residents and what is best of best interest of our residents. That's all.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Jomhoff.
Not to the labor of point, um, and a lot of good points have already been made. Um, I will add in, I am one hundred percent behind our mayor in this and I'm adequately in favor of this project. Um, like councilman Gilbert, I am really bothered by the fact that we found out about this secondhand, that we were never approached by our county commissioners regarding this project, even though it's in the heart of our downtown, nor were we approached by Access Carol about this project. And this has huge public safety implications. Um, if I remember correctly, you know, my sons work at a local church. There was a pastor that was assaulted over the summer and I believe that person was a homeless person. I believe they were out of Baltimore. Um, and also this has, we've been talking for years, making a lot of efforts regarding our water reuse, about economic redevelopment and about downtown being a priority. And all of this is incredibly unhelpful to that mission. Um, and, you know, we are not alone with this as, as Councilman Kavachi mentioned. You know, the sheriff is in full support of our opposition to this and is opposing it as well. Um, the state's attorney, Haven Shoemaker, is opposed to this. And as I shared with you all today, uh, via an email, our entire state delegation has wrote a letter to the county commissioners in opposition to this. Um, so I think it's very interesting when you have the entirety of the Westminster City Council, the sheriff, the state's attorney, and our entire delegation all stating the same thing regarding this project and being opposed to this project. Um, so I hope that the county commissioners actually listen to what the city of Westminster is saying and put, and actually care about what is in the best interest of our citizens within the city of Westminster. Because I would argue that if they did, they would realize that's in the best interest of not only the city, but all of Carroll County. Um, thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Jomhoff. Right, um, move on now to, uh, ordinances and resolutions. We have one item for this evening. Um, adoption of ordinance number one twenty-four dash zero nine, um, tobacconist and vape shop text amendment. Ordinance of the mayor and common council of Westminster, pending chapter one sixty-four zoning subdivision of land in city code determined article one, general provisions to add definitions, specialty shop, tobacconist and vape shop. Amendment article seven A mixed-use infill zone, article eight B business zone, article eight B, the downtown business zone, article nine C V central business zone, and article twelve P I planned industrial zone. Add tobacconist and vape shops as permitted uses. Amend article eleven A, AC neighborhood commercialism, add vape shops as a permitted use. Then amend article twenty, special provisions, propose certain restrictions on the location of vape shops. And to renumber without substantive change the list of permitted uses in certain of those zones. Mr. Depot.
Thank you. Just quick background, again, on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, the mayor and common council held a public hearing on the ordinance and they closed the public hearing and subsequently continued the case at the January twenty-seventh meeting. However, on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, the Department of Community Plan Development received a zoning determination request from Norman Ashgar. This is the individual that opened the business at two seven ninety East Main Street without obtaining proper approvals, which is a concern. Uh, uh, with not only the city, the staff, but a, a coun, uh, council had questions about that as well. And as to whether selling, uh, primarily vaping products is allowed at the property. Uh, on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the mayor and common council again moved to continue its decision on ordinance twenty-four oh nine to the February tenth meeting, tonight's meeting. Uh, on February fourth, the zoning administrator issued a zoning determination to Mr. Ashgar as well as Mr. Cohen, he's the property owner, via email, that the business selling primarily vaping products at C seventy-nine East Main Street is today a specialty shop. And pursuant to the zoning ordinance, specialty shop is a permitted use at that property. So this would allow the gentleman that opened the business to continue to come into compliance to the zoning ordinance as a specialty shop, as it is today. Zone administration, administrator also informed Mr. Ashgar and Mr. Cohen that if ordinance twenty-four oh nine is approved by the mayor and common council as introduced, that the business may no longer be considered a specialty shop use and therefore may not be able to be initiated after the effective date of the ordinance without meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance as amended. However, the specialty shop as outlined in the zoning determination may operate as a non-performing use in conformance with the zoning ordinance. So what that means is, if the mayor and common council adopt the ordinance as, as introduced, this, the use would actually be considered a vape shop. And in this location, a vape shop would not be allowed because of another location, another vape shop within a vicinity. But with the determination and they have submitted a site plan to establish the use, under the ordinance today, that use would be a specialty shop and continue as a specialty shop as a non-performing use in perpetuity. If that use was ever to leave and within, after six months, it could not return as a vape shop unless it was in compliance with the ordinance. So again, this resolves the issue that, um, zone administrator had with the use operating. We've worked with the applicant and the property owner to, uh, work the site and bring the site into conformance. And I think this resolves some of the issues that, uh, staff was having um, as we're moving forward with this text amendment. And then with that, the Department of Community Plan Development recommends that the mayor and common council approve ordinance twenty-four oh nine, amending the zoning ordinance with respect to the definitions of permitted locations of vape shops as introduced on November eleventh, twenty twenty-four and provided in attachment one of this report and I'm available for any questions.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Depot, for that exposition on what has become an amazingly complex. Always seems to be.
Always seems to be, right?
We have a motion, uh, to adopt ordinance number twenty-four dash.
I'll move to adopt the ordinance twenty-four. Uh, twenty twenty-four oh nine, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. There's a motion by Mr. Kavachi. Is there a second?
I'll second.
The second by Mr. Hoff. Is there any discussion or any questions for Mr. Depot?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
Couple of things. Number one, I'd like to thank Mr. Depot, uh, you know, contrary to what a few of our local attorneys may, uh, may try to pretend that the, uh, the narrative is. He isn't the Grinch who steals every Christmas when it comes to, uh, people trying, with businesses up. He went above and beyond to try to work things out with this business owner who I think really got kind of caught between rock and hard place, um, on this. And I, I commend you on figuring out a solution for him so that young man can, can, you know, live out his dream of having the shop open and still stay within, you know, with, with, within our ordinance. So thank you for that and I think we all appreciate you putting in the time and effort to make that happen. I'd also like to, in fact, thank Mr. Tom Gordon, I'm sorry, Tom Gordon, Tom was here earlier, Tom Cannon. Um, he was here with us this evening. Um, he's.
There's no comparison.
Uh, Mr. Cannon owns a brand new shop on Main Street called Tobacco on Main that, uh, I got a little sneak preview to see what it's gonna look like. It's gonna be awesome. Um, but he spent a lot of time and effort helping craft a few parts of this because wanted to make sure that we didn't ensnare some businesses that, that don't necessarily, uh, fall, that we didn't want to get caught up in this, um, this whole thing in, in terms of what we're doing here with this ordinance. So he worked with Mr. Depot, spent some time making sure that we crafted this with some expertise in the field. So I'm grateful he took the time to, to give us, uh, some time for that and, uh, we appreciate that. And also, I'll, like, have the floor for a second. Very excited about the shop opening and hope everyone that's watching this will, uh, pay you a visit. So, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Anyone else wish to be heard? We have no further discussion, move on to vote. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance number twenty-two four dash zero nine, tobacco vape shop text amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Do I seem to have any eyes having it? And the ordinance is adopted. Thank you. Okay, peace. Uh, next item is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business. Which, um, where does anybody have unfinished business to be? Here, none. We'll move on to new business. We have one item of new business. And for that, I'll turn to Mr. Kavachi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, would like to make a motion that the common council adjourn to a closed meeting on Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty-five at the conclusion of the regular meeting, this regular meeting, in accordance with the general provisions article of the Panitated Code of Maryland, three dash three oh five subsection B three to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related there to and subsection B seven to consult with council to obtain legal advice.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Is there a second in Mr. Kavachi's motion?
Second.
The second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Do I seem to have any eyes having it? I note that the council will not adjourn from the regular session at the conclusion of the closed meeting. Um, next item is departmental reports. Mr. Depot, I'm interested in you to lead us through this tonight?
Yes, thank you. And I will start with Director Gruber and Recreation and Parks.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Um, just one particular item of interest I'd like to report in on tonight. Uh, the Recreation and Parks Department is thrilled to announce that we will finally be, be bringing a five K run back to our Flower and Jazz Festival. Um, we have not been able to offer this run as part of the festival since twenty eighteen. And so we, um, are stacked at full capacity in the department and we are happy to be able to bring this back to our citizens. Uh, we've had many requests for this to come back, um, onto the festival day from moms and daughters and sons and families that had made it a tradition. So, um, what is really exciting about the race this year is it will be a mutters' day, five K. And we will have a one-mile mini mutter for children ten and under. Um, this exciting event will be held out at Wakefield Valley Park at nine AM on Saturday, May tenth, which is also the date of Flower and Jazz. And, um, so we are busy planning the obstacles that will be contained within the course and also, um, creating and actually figuring out where we can make the best mud for this event. So we are certainly excited. We have registration opening on Friday, February fourteenth. And, uh, we hope that the community will embrace this exciting new endeavor from your Recreation and Parks Department. And that concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
Whatever. Mr. President, I can assure you, I've got some grandchildren that can help you find some really. Mr. President, I can assure you, I've got some grandchildren that can help you find some really good stuff. But they seem to be able to find it anywhere they go.
Any other questions, Mr. Brina? Is it Gilbert?
Mr. Depot, yes, I have one question. Did you say the Saturday before Flower and Jazz or before Mother's Day?
Well, Flower and Jazz is.
Flower and Jazz is before, but never mind. So it is the Saturday before.
It, it is on Flower and Jazz, which is the Saturday, right, before Mother's Day. So.
Yes, alright. Thank you.
Let's see, any other questions? Director Moore in the IT department.
I do have everything shared, but if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? I see any. Mr. Director Brown with housing.
Thank you. I just want to mention one thing. If you listened to the, and saw the weather report, there is a an event that's coming. We don't know what it's, how much snow it's going to be, but there's going to be some snow. I know that the, the streets department is going to be doing its job and making sure that all of the streets are clean of all of the snow. We are just reminding property owners and, and those that occupy property that there's a requirement in the city code that 24 hours after that event, that they need to clean the salt, the walkable sidewalks so that it doesn't create a public safety issue. And we're going to do our best to try to get that communication out as quickly as we can. So members of the community will be reminded of it and do their, do their best that they can to assist the city and making sure that the citizens stay safe. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Director Brown? Seeing him. Director Rogers, Finance Department.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. I do not have a report tonight, but happy to answer the questions you might have.
Any questions? Not seeing any. Then I'll move on to myself.
On February the 4th, the board of zoning appeals meeting, at the meeting itself, the applicant appealing the zoning administrator's September 27th initial notice of violation for set for, I'm sorry, for 79 East Main Street for the unapproved operation of a business, which we just talked about, withdrew the case, and that was due to the zoning determination that was provided. The board of zoning appeals then heard and approved BZA case number 2501, an amendment to the special exception multifamily detached growing use. This is the, the apartments across the street from the gas station, video section of Washington and Main Street. And this was solely to allow for a 32 square foot sign, and that was approved for the multifamily use. On February the 5th, the historic district commission approved facade improvement application, FI 2501, and tax credit application TC 2501 for 31 West Main Street to replace 14 windows in the autonomous robotics innovation center space. So all those industrial windows you see on the side and back, they did gain approval for both the facade improvement tax credit for that replacement. The historic district commission also approved the facade improvement application FI 2502 for 4 West Main Street, this is Johansson Restaurants, to paint the building and brick repair. The historic district commission also discussed its implementation plan, the nation's 25th, 250th, 250th anniversary, the historic district entrance signage and historic district street signage. We are looking at replacing street signs in downtown Westminster Historic District with historic signs, as well as nice entrance signs as you're entering an historic district. With that, I'd also like to thank Director Gruber for meeting with myself and the Economic Development Coordinator to talk about the plans for the 250th. We're still at the beginning stages, but she came up with some wonderful ideas that I think is going to make that a nice year. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Mr. Depot, with the BZA regarding the sign, were you satisfied with the kind of sign that was approved? Because I think there were discussions that that sign should be more of a property marker than just purely advertising.
That's correct. So because the sign is for the special exception use, the sign itself has to be predominantly for the special exception use, and that being the multifamily building. We have reached out to the applicant. There's another option they might go, look into to maintain the sign that's there. But for what was approved by the board of zoning appeals, it would have to be a new sign where again, predominantly it would say Main Street Muse with information of who manages it on it as well.
Okay, good. I, I just, so that was the decision of the BZA? Go ahead. Okay, thank you. And thank you for your work on that, Joe.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Police chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just two quick things. One, our new certified lateral officer starts tomorrow, gets sworn in tomorrow afternoon. And second, in a follow-up to some of the improvements we made in the police department, we had put a monitor in the officer's room. Sergeant Ecker took the lead on our behalf, worked with IT and our communication supervisor to have a CAD interface displayed there, which that's the computer aided dispatch. What that'll do is it'll allow us to have our running calls for service. They can click on it, open the notes. Supervisors can kind of monitor, have access to the visual of the, of the CAD system on that monitor, which is, I think, a very good tool to have in place. And then we also have our crime dashboard up there, which is the daily updated interface that shows where and when we have any public safety issues. It was put together by our GIS specialist within IT. And it's a great tool for roll call. It's a great tool for the officers coming back from days off to go look at if there are any crime events in their, in their beat, so to speak. And also for deployment strategies. So they can pull up, you can pick any type of category you want on the dropdown. As little as you want or as much as you want. You can put in your date and time range, and it'll give you all your data points, and then you can use that data to, to strategize and deploy accordingly. So looks great. Dudos and thanks to IT and public works for helping us out and to the folks in our department who stepped up. That's all I have. Unless you have any questions.
And our sister chief, Mike Hoff.
Sounds like the person who's hitting anything, those dated driven beliefs.
And with that, that completes department's reports. Alright, good night. Thank you, Mr. Depot. Final item on our agenda, the citizens' comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to like tonight's agenda or any other city issue. For citizens not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments or concerns via email at comments@westminstermd.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. We ask commenters who contact us by email to also please leave their address and phone number with their comments. Now invite comments from anyone who's present here at the seat. Would anybody like to be heard? If so, please give us your name and address for the record.
Mr. President.
Senator Summerfield.
Robin Summerfield. My address is Rollings, Maryland, but I'm here. Senator Van Hollen. First of all, I want to congratulate the chief on that fine report that you received. Says speaks volumes about the quality of police work you're doing here. So congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Two, two things that I want to share. We will be taking requests from cities nonprofits for congressional direct spending projects this year. I would love to come out here and talk to you guys, your, your team about any projects you'd like to submit so we can make sure that you have any questions answered that you may have about how those might be submitted.
We have needs.
So I'm happy to, happy to get together with your team, come out here and see what you've got going on. Lastly, I just want to share that Senator Van Hollen and Senator Alsbrooks will be hosting a joint town hall, online town hall Wednesday night at 7:30 to respond to and address concerns of federal employees, nonprofits, the local governments, and to take questions and concerns from the community. So I will share that information with your team, so you can log on to that if you'd like. It will be live streamed as well on the senator's website for anyone who just wants to watch it. But I will share the information with you so you can share with your citizens if they'd like to actually log in and participate.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Senator Van Hollen for sending you off. We appreciate it.
It's my honor, my pleasure. And now I'll let you go to your closed meeting. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Do the same.
Alright, so that includes our agenda and the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, February 24th. And with that, I'm going to let's go.